You say.
Now it's good. Calling order. We have a live release. Live release to the by the United States of America.
Thank you all with permission stands. All nation. And this whole. Thursday and just look free.
Shinsu, gentlemen.
Hi, I'm Nani.
I'm also approving the agenda. But yet to so. Second. Second, uh, on their side. Great.
Hi.
Hi.
You got the minutes from the August fifth meeting. Any questions? Angels to those ones. Pairing them and stand approved as printed. Flames. Was there any light ones?
Yep, yes. It's like this.
Any questions on those? Should to pay the funds.
So.
Second.
Second, uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion approved. So do you want to go right to the?
Um, I just want a couple of things under notices and communications impending. So number one, uh, today. Uh, got confirmation from Excel Energy that the outage is planned for. Uh, midnight on Friday, so Thursday night. Uh, and this is estimated to be four hours in length. Uh, again, this is putting everything back together from the last one, basically, so. Uh, what they're doing is that Noble was doing that substation. Uh, further to the south and Great River Energy is putting in their own transmission line. And they're gonna serve both, so have redundant transmission for both substations from both Excel and. Great River Energy, so they're putting that all together, so. Um, we will be, they'll be pushing it out tomorrow in a call, uh, not everybody. Has their automated service, so we will be hammering that as well on the all Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights. As well on Facebook and websites and everything to make sure, yes, so.
Can we do a cold run that night at like five o'clock?
Yep. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a cold ride at like six P M, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
Yep, or not Friday.
Cause there's some businesses that had some issues this last.
There's a lot of people that have issues.
And so they added more, um. Accurate potentially estimate this time of.
Yes.
Like five, not three minutes, yeah.
You know, can I say something crazy is after the power went off that night, I checked it. And when their website, it stated that it was gonna take four hours to divide on, right after it went off.
Not what, that's not what we're.
I know, that's not what nobody was told.
Yeah.
But why are we not with Nobles coming?
Uh, not yet.
Is it coming?
Well, we're.
It's cheaper.
In the process of buying our own electric utility and we will be utilizing them for our maintenance and.
That's awesome, awesome.
Yeah. Um, so that was the only thing under notices, communications on your, yes.
Um, I attended the, um, open house at the Nobles Cooperative Electric New Edition out there last week. I snuck back, I took a cup, an hour of vacation to get back and highly recommend if you haven't get a. Been out there to go ahead and go, and they told me, I mean, I was sold, oh, we didn't have any city council, were you up there? Were you been out there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he just said, we would love to have city council come and take a look at it, just come anytime, and I had a wonderful tour, um. I believe in the tour and it was, uh, it's quite facility, so it's a very, very nice addition, Slaton, and. Um, just super excited that they chose to, uh. Make this their whole base. And, and, and they have that nice addition, it's very, very nice, so I would recommend encourage you to go check it out.
Alright, uh, we'll talk about cannabis ordinance later, so another thing under. Uh, pending is, um, we had tentatively at one point had tonight as a project workshop, but, uh, Myron is gonna be gone. And so I'd like to have everybody present a person for that. Um. I have met with every city council. And. The draft is. Like ninety-nine percent done, and so I can do it ever. Uh, I think. Myron is gone, even the next meeting, which is because of Labor Day, it's Tuesday, the second. And so I think I was looking at the week of the eighth. Which is probably fine anyway, since it's after on Teak then, which is also is a week. Uh. Suppose, I think in Monday or Tuesday, or we can. This would make me not super nervous, we could add it to the second meeting in September, but that's getting a little close to the thirtieth to certify our preliminary if we have. Um, issues, I'm not expecting there to be, uh, right now, let me actually look at decent. Uh, but I think there's definitely gonna be some discussion to add about water, so we'll raise something, so. So with that, what is we open to our special meeting workshop on the week of the eighth?
The eighth doesn't work with the rest of the week.
What do you like?
I think I've got that workout.
Alright.
Well, Thursday. What, does, would that Thursday work for any? You know, that'd be the eleventh person should be back then?
Yep. Start.
Five thirty, six.
Five thirty.
Okay. Eleven thirty. Sweet. Now we can move on to. Liquor licenses.
Hey, we're skipping ahead in business, number five. Application for. Backyard regular fuel license on off sale, it's something said.
No two A M, right?
No two A M, and it's the backyard fire grill.
So Giggle's Tavern Incorporated is actually the corporation name and then doing T B A, bar, medical, bar. So. We have complete application for off sale, on sale, and Sunday sale. Fees been paid, uh, utility bills current, proof of insurance, proof of incorporation. Um, everything here is here, and so would, uh. Recommend approval of all three of those licenses. And, uh, authorize me to send them to the state for their processing.
That could be just in that.
Bathroom, I got a, um, Jeremy's gone for the Navy, but I, I, I'm percent sure he did bask already with forty lap, so. Yeah, just be careful like that.
But I just need water bills that were due Friday.
Yep.
I can, she'll pay him tomorrow, I can write a check for him now, don't worry.
Just saying, cause that's, that's the rule.
I guess like a hundred bucks, you know, I guess.
That's just one month. Yes, I moved to approve that contingent upon the, the background check was done, it is satisfied.
Second.
Second.
And utility bills.
Yep.
That was.
That's my one.
Second.
Correct.
Uh, all in favor? Alright, alright, I'm. Motion passed.
Alright.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. We're gonna carry it to my mark.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Have a good night, guys.
You too. Uh, let's do Duena for the library summer reading course.
Um, I brought some fun numbers, I did some. I don't know if they were quick. I've been keeping track of new numbers, different ways to compare from year to year. This summer, from June first to August fifteenth, we've had two thousand four hundred and forty-seven people just come into the library for various things. And that's kept for most of that, it was just me and Sandy working, so we were pretty busy. Um, we had four, we were four thousand, almost five thousand checkouts in that two and a half months. And then down in the corner, I. Realized that, um, we had two unexpected bonuses this summer. Um, as of July seventh, we now have a Minnesota State Park Pass that the public can come in. And use their library card to check out for one week at a time. That is granted to us from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources.
Yeah.
And it's working like a charm, it's been checked out five times, which about, we had it for about five weeks, so it's, it's sat at the front desk for about a day. Or gets checked out again. Something I didn't anticipate with the revival of summer readings is that. Fourteen toddlers have updated their little reading logs, there's a program called. One thousand books before kindergarten, the challenge for the families is to read together and try to have their toddler. Read or read with them one thousand books before they're enrolled in school, so I did not anticipate this upsurge of toddlers. Bringing their parents and picking out their little prizes, so that was, that just brought joy to my heart. Um, and then on the other side, this is a snapshot of what we did this summer, we've. Completed thirty-three programs and for a total of five hundred and sixty-three participants. In those either activities or events. I like to compare numbers, so I tried to go back and look at two thousand twenty-four or twenty-three, but due to renovation and staffing, that's not. A very fair number to compare. So I had to look all the way back to two thousand and twenty-two. Over the whole year of two thousand twenty-two, there were seven hundred and eleven participants. And so the fact that we have five hundred and sixty participants just during the summer, I'm. I'm relieved to say that I think we're back to pre-renovation participation. Oh, and then finally, back on the other side. Um, during the summer, we have a summer reading challenge, this year it was called Reading Dragons, we've had sixty-three kid, mostly kids. Sign up to participate. As of today, twenty-two of them completed their reading trackers and turned it in for prizes. And those twenty-two kids completed three hundred twenty-seven hours of reading. As part of the. Trackers that they bring in, they get entries into the grand prize pass and, uh, drawings. Would you guys like to draw the three winners tonight? Or is that too much pressure?
Oh, they what?
Sure. Okay, my only. Request is that the same kid does not win all three drawings. So before we. Before we like unround some publicly, I want you three to like compare to be sure it wasn't the same kid twice or three times. Alright, there is one drawing. And two and drawing three. So then look, yeah, please look at each other, oh, it's too much pressure. Dean, did you participate? I can't remember.
Oh, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
They're all three different.
Okay, do you wanna go ahead and read them aloud, or you want me to read them aloud?
I have Maggie Keller's.
Maggie Keller, and I gotta keep track of which one they. Maggie Keller wins the book nerd basket.
I have Atticus Punt.
Atticus Punt wins the team chomp basket. And the winner of the team bacon basket.
Is Emerson Magnus.
Emerson Magnus, thank you, I will contact them tomorrow. And they'll nerd out, so thank you.
What was the file bacon?
Team bacon is Emerson Magnus.
Roger that. Alright.
Thanks for the report.
Any question?
No.
No.
No, that was fantastic.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can do a dehumidifier if you want, I don't know if, uh, Chief Lieutenant wants to stay for a THC or not, but ordinance, I mean.
Alright, uh, then to unfinished business, item number four, where you have tabled. Uh, dehumidifier for the fire hall to.
So, yeah, you had left, uh, your stuff here, Blake, which was good, so I didn't copy every single page off. Uh, the specs and the quote there, and then I had the quotes from.
For.
Um, what Chris had had as well, not the. Ones you're like, great, but whatever. That's the.
My intention.
Well, so, okay. I'll let, now you two kind of. Kick it off, I guess.
I think the request was for Blake to look into something that from a local vendor possibly, or whatever, and it looks like he came back with. A machine that, and I see can do three hundred and twenty pints a day. Um, quarter and forty volt. Permanent location. Dehumidifier, um, looks like fifty-one hundred dollars. I actually just looked at, I just saw this here about fifteen pints, I see, so. Sorry, what your guys' thoughts are. I'll give a little background, Blake to a little portable.
Wait, what is that now?
Humidostat in there?
And I've been, I tried a couple of things too.
I. I've been trying to paying attention, and it was cool out at like midnight the other night, I went down there. It was seventy-five or seventy-eight percent humidity. I opened the doors in about fifteen minutes, it dropped it. Eight percent or something like that by just opening the doors. Um. Yesterday, well, this weekend, we were in there a lot on Saturday, had washed the trucks, put them in there, it was fairly high all day. Again, I opened the doors that night and let's hope it out. Um.
Yeah.
I guess my, I really like the portability of this one ninety-five. That we can move it around and put it where we want it, not. Not fully against a mounted one. Um. I don't know, I don't.
So just kind of based on, I guess what I had found in looking at the. The cubic volume of what's there, I understand. Why he recommended or thinks there should be two of the one ninety-fives.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. And so that's what, when I had looked at. What I find through my wholesaler, this particular unit is, is not quite double two of them, but. It gets into that, that higher. The higher amount, but like I. So I put a humidist stat or a humidity gauge, whatever you wanna call it in there, and it wasn't too terrible bad, but then I. Went in, I just took the garden hose and I sprayed water on the floor, it actually dries fairly quickly. Like I went back down there a couple hours later, and most of the water on the floor was dry, but when the floor water on the floor gets dry, that means the water goes in here. And it was close to eighty percent humidity in there.
Hmm.
And that's, I mean. That therein lies, that's the problem, I mean, I, I really think that. That getting that humidity and everything out of there. You know, when you. When you open up the doors and it's actually knocking it out, yeah, I mean, it just. Bushit goes away, it's like heat leaves the building. Or humidity leaves the building just as fast as when heat does.
So I guess my only thing that I'll say is. Yeah, the, the one ninety-five does two hundred pints a day or whatever. Do we, do we need to spend the extra money to have the per day pints really high, or is it gonna do its job over a course of? A day and a half or two days? And it's portable and we can move it around and.
So the one that Blake. Quoted as a movable one then?
No, that one's a, that one, I think it's like.
No.
And it's, it's similar to the, being similar to the. I think I was, this big one that he had forwarded at the first page. Um, I. To be perfectly honest, and I didn't feel that that one of those was adequate, that's why I didn't. Do that, I guess. Um, his recommendation was for two of them, I agree with that, and I found something similar. So, that was why, I guess.
So yours, yours is hardware than these other ones, the one in type are, are movable, you can.
The one ninety-five is something that's kind of like. Torito, have you ever seen when someone's basement gets wet and growth, he comes with a big portable. Dehumidifier, he gets a new base.
So the one ninety-five can be plugged into a regular.
Yeah.
Twenty amp outlet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the five oh six that he had quoted, that one is a stationary one. That is. The same thing as the one Blake quoted, it's a two forty roll, it's gotta be hardwareed in. So.
But read, I mean, the reality of it is, it doesn't matter. Where it's put. Um. It could literally be in a. In a corner of the building, if you start to dehumidify or if you're adequately dehumidifying. The humidity is just gonna migrate through, and you won't, you won't find one percent different from one to the other.
So does the one that you quoted come with all the things that he quoted on it as well?
Yep.
He must have had the case of filters, what, some of that stuff?
Yeah, so if you look in the backside of my quote. It's got like the included control. Um. It doesn't come with, it comes with the initial filters, he had. He had an extra case of, which is six, I mean, he. That was, that's a whole other line item there. That wasn't included. It comes with you, like on the one ninety-five.
He, he gives him, he gives you a case for, he puts it as a line on it and takes it up.
Oh, okay. Well, at any rate, six hundred and forty-eight dollars for a case, regardless, I mean, it comes with the original one. Filters are, I think, like. Ten bucks a piece, or it's like a, it's furnace filters, all it is. It's just a, it's just a regular old, you can kind of see it on the back, it's just a. Regular.
So yours is in the installation without including, what is that gonna cost?
Just to get it wired. And like. This big one wouldn't have had the installation included either for that. Obviously, the one that you can plug into an outlet, you just plug into an outlet, right? But.
You just run a drain line down the side of the wall into a floor drain then, or?
Yeah. And go. Basically, you can drain it anywhere. The, I don't know if his, if that, if the portable ones, some of the portable ones have an actual. Condensate pump on them, like ones both has, I don't. I was gonna stop down, the one at the. Treatment plant, I never did make it there.
It's the same exact one and you're in the one. Right, no. That there is a condensate pump.
I don't say pump, it's got, and then we just put a little tube on it.
Yep.
Where you run a thing to the, to the floor, the stationary ones. Those typically run by gravity, it's like an air conditioner.
So this, are we, the one that's stationary that be put on the floor or on the wall somewhere, and she? Yeah.
Either you could hang it from the ceiling or put it up in a mess of need.
So, and then the other one that you play, you can do that with either one of them, or the other one is just on the floor?
The other one's on the floor.
So.
You could.
You could put it, there you go.
I'm just, so I'm asking is, you know, space consideration as far as what you have room for, do you have room to have a unit like this, you know, on floors or where, you know, I don't. If, you know, I'm, I'm searching for rooms, so.
A, a permanent hanging one is fine, I mean, it's out of the.
Yeah, and, you know, but.
And you could do that with either of these, we all could. No.
No. One ninety-five, one on the ground.
Oh.
I mean, you, you certainly could set it on a shelf, right, it doesn't have to move, but.
Right.
It certainly could.
Yeah, take gasters off.
Yeah. Or just leave, whatever.
So Chris did incorporate into his two thousand twenty-six budget, um, there is no money in, he did. Uh, there's no money in twenty twenty-five for it, as we couldn't, uh, find it, if it's, uh, that, or that I need. But that's a point of discussion as well, I suppose. On the timing, or if we wanna do it period, or what type of unit we want.
I'm up for whatever.
Yeah, if we're, if we're having trouble with rigs, I think we need to do it. Yeah. Now that Chris is here, you can actually have a horn that can blow it on, except he probably shouldn't blow it on. But. Um, I guess if you look at all three units and just like the bang for the buck of what they. Uh. If you divide it out, like what you're getting. The first one is the cheapest one. That is up to you guys, I really don't care. I'll let you make this decision. I'll stop talking, you guys.
Differ to somebody else's expertise on what you really think is, uh, is needed here, so. You know.
Alright, so I'm gonna. Just say the fact that when you're talking about pints per day. Um. The one that is being presented by Slaton, if one meeting is probably going to. Take out the most pints per day. Um, being stationary isn't any problem. And so if we're going to go with one, I guess it is my recommendation to go with that one. And I will leave it up to you guys whether we wanna wait until the twenty-six budget. Goes through, or if we wanna do it right now, we'll have to. Rob Peter to pay Paul to make it happen now.
In the twenty-six budget, you have it proposed to come out of the general fund, it, it would fit. Within the fire equipment fund regardless of what year it came, like if we buy it in twenty-five, it's gonna pretty much have to come out of the fire equipment fund.
Right.
So.
What was?
Which is an appropriate use, because it is going to be a fixture of the county, it's over twenty ten.
And there's excess in that, and we could.
Well, there's an X, there's an X, there is fund balances paid.
Kind of that.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
I guess my feeling, it's something that should be found out. Actually, because it is, in my opinion, causing. Undue wear of.
Yeah.
On the equip.
My prediction would be that it's probably not going to be fifty-one hundred dollars six months.
Right. And, uh, I mean, we're talking like. There's over a million dollars. Scott building, that. This could. Very much prolong the life of it. It's, it's the same reason we have the water treatment plant, just. Making motion, we go with the, uh, slave pony heating now. For the end of. Deep river.
I'll second that.
First and a second. All in favor?
Alright.
Bye. I will stay. Option to hang it, maybe make you book a dryer or something like that, if you could get it closer to the fesene to where you could maybe reach the filter from there.
I don't know if we'll get it that close, but.
You know, you whack your head on the steps a lot, huh?
Well, no, I mean, on the, on the, on the south side. South side. If you can mount it up there.
Tanks over there.
Right, but see, if you, it's only. Twenty-four by thirty-two. It's some equipment, but if you can get it over, if you can get it somewhere over in that location, you have to sit there too. You know, as far as for draining the condensate, you got plumbing over there and stuff like that, so I mean, it might be. You got electric, you got electrical there, you got drain line there. And if you could get at it for a mess of need. Might be able to change the filter without having to get on a ladder. We got plenty of trucks.
We climb up all. People attacking.
Since we're, we're gonna do ladder trading. Right. That might be, that might be not some place to put it. Then we're the wash, washing.
Still water that's coming out of that, we could be all taffy green and environmental, just dump it right in the tank and save it.
I think we. Back in the tooth ties with our telling. A very appropriate way to move on.
Alright, let's talk about. Uh. Draft of.
Let's do it.
Ordinance, shall we?
So this is, uh. A lot better, in my opinion, it is. A lot better, in my opinion, it is. Uh, pipe stones. Uh, there. So back in the seventies, their model code or uniform code of ordinances, whatever you wanna call it. Which is the general flow of everything. Pretty much mirrors ours, and so their chapters are not exactly the same, which are a little bit uh, in terms of overall people, but it's very, very similar. Uh, there is actually the, also the most recently passed, and so this uh. This is. In my opinion, uh, barring any, we'll kinda walk through the, the major points here, cause there's even a couple that have. Changed and need to be discussed, uh, but I think pretty darn close to a file verdict. But you can see, the first part is the. Legislative findings of purpose, should have that every single order, that's basically it's your justification of the higher name yet. Uh, part two is the definitions, you wanna go on the mission, which you think is. And no offense, shall cannabis business of any relation to the form of considerable business. Article three through.
You say the only definition, I, I'm not sure, you know. That's like one item is being defined, I, I, I guess I've. Not clear.
I'm not clear on your question.
Well, normally when you have definitions, it's more than one thing under the, under the list of definitions, that's what I'm saying.
In that section, so in that specific session, cause if you, if you go to the new section that we're creating, one fifty-two point one six. It's all, these are new definitions. Page five through seven are all.
Okay.
Both are, all the cannabis related.
Well.
Definitions. This, this one in one fifty-two point or whatever is just in the, the general provisions of the zoning code.
Okay.
In that very first part.
Okay.
That makes sense to me. So as we go. Article three, so this is basically what types of cannabis businesses. What types of licensures of cannabis businesses are you gonna allow in each of our respective zoning codes, so these. And are our zoning codes, the ag open, the business one, which is highway business, business two. Uh, central business district, which is the Broadway, and uh. Then we're not gonna allow any of them in residential, so those are listed, cause those definition through the. Excuse me, sections would not be changing, and then the general industrial uh district. Article six, so in ag open, the only one that I had proposed to be allowed there. Is cannabis cultivation. The only ag open district we have. Districts that we have are basically all of our. Recently, when I say recently, probably within the last ten years. Anexed inland that is not. Developed yet, other than. Doug's industrial park, so that, that was sawed as high one as we. Annexed it, which are new rust stations, so. Uh, but like. The unused portion where the fertilizer plant went is AO. Trevor's house is AO. He requested that because he wanted to be able to have animals there, so that's the five acre minimum. Satisfies all. So is there any? Opposition or questions to that cultivation being in?
No, that, so, the only question I have, so like for central. Business district. That's something we have to add to it, but it's still. Has to be. Like. The setbacks, and so like what would they add, is there a place on Main Street that?
There are like. Three parcels on the east side of the street. From like Paul Malone's office. North. To the bowling alley. It's, there's a very small section, the west side of Broadway is pretty much all. Cause you have. Joni's daycare and Coogan Meister's daycare. And then, this is another thing we need to talk about too, because in the first draft we had, we did not have religious. Buildings in there. Pipestone was half five hundred feet of religious buildings too, so. That's point of discussion, do we wanna add that limitation as well, or you don't care about that, now that would mirror liquor.
I would be totally fine with. Doing that, mirroring liquor at them, and. I think as a result of that, that. Is probably gonna eat up the rest of Main Street with the Presbyterian Church being there.
And three.
And going over here.
And one right over here.
Oh, yeah, well, that, yeah, that totally did, I forgot about faith, that completely takes out Main Street, that, pretty much, yeah.
If that's something that we can do and we can. Stay closer to being in line with our liquor ordinances, then I, I feel that we should do that.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
I would too.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so then for highway business district. Micro, menso, retailer, wholesaler, transporter, delivery, medical cannabis combo, and the lower potency hemp edible. So the ones that you're not having there, like the cultivation, the wholesale, the, actually not wholesale, well, this is highway, so you are allowing wholesaler. Um, kinda the. The bigger type of license, but not manufacturing, now let, let that one in the industrial, so everyone's. So this would basically be. Highway thirty and highway fifty, right? Okay, central business districts. Uh, would be adding micro, retailer, medical cannabis combo, and the lower potency hemp edible. We're all good with that. You've seen adding heads, okay, and then general industrial district, cultivator, manufacturer, wholesaler. Transporter, testing facility, cannabis event organizer, and lower potency hemp edible manufacturer. Now, just a note that lower potency hemp edible manufacturer, differentiate that from retailer, so. All good with that?
I'm good with that content, I just, as far as the, the numbering of all this, is this all gonna? Change, kind of, I mean, like you've got article three and it starts with B, I'll just start with B instead of like, where's A?
So you're only putting in the ordinance the section that you're changing.
So we don't have ordinance yet, though.
This is part of our general zoning ordinance.
Right, so we do have this section. That's why all of this is not underlined, cause this is existing code, so you're just adding these, everything that's double.
Everything that's double underlined is just add on into the existence of our zoning code.
So is there some, I understand, you don't understand why we don't, of course, I realize it's a big code, it's gonna be a tons of.
Fair gas to save.
You know, but I mean, it's just. I understand what you're saying, but, okay. That answers the question.
It's clear notes, basically. It's just that you have the whole code.
Right.
And I didn't do that. And what I mean by that is I didn't. But, like, that is the final version of, this is the full ordinance, because you're. Otherwise, you're, you would just be reading pages about pages of existing code that isn't changing. And so, yeah, some of the context might be a little bit lost, but you're. You know, that's why you're only putting in there what's being struck or added.
So I have, cause I have actually printed a copy of our ordinance up, I have it in a file, and it, it's, it's like that thick.
It's, yeah. Um, article seven. This is the new section, so one fifty-two point oh six, our current code ends at one fifty-two point oh five, this is still in the zoning chapter. And so this gets into kind of the meat and potatoes of, um, the definitions, so. There's this big space at the end of page five, that is just a formatting printing thing, that, that. The authority. Uh, in A, just references the statute, it empowers us to enforce and, and create the ordinance. Uh, then it goes into the definition, so, uh, page five, six, seven are all the definitions. Um, that is pulled basically straight out of, of statute in the model. Ordinance, I'm just looking through here to make sure that we don't want to talk about any of these.
One, missing T's in statute in a few places.
So like for, I'm, I'm also curious. Definition of school, it says public school is defined under Minnesota statute, or non-public school, that means through. So the non-public school is Wonder World Trinity? Both of them, ain't that?
So, so I have to check a little bit more into Wonder, but Wonder World is daycare, so for sure, they're gonna be five hundred feet.
But they got.
But if they're, if, yes, so they, they do have a preschool, but do they report? Under that, you know, uh. One twenty-eight point two four, so like. Trinity. Does, so like if you have an IP or whatever, they had to follow all of that. You know, I, I don't know what.
I think that is, I think. I'm just curious. It's the footage. On the footage for daycare.
Thousand for schools, five hundred for daycare, so it wouldn't make a difference. Uh, if we go to page eight, operations, this would be. Just the, the codes, building code, uh, we don't enforce state building code, but referencing it is important. Because plumbing, electrical would have to be signed off as part of building code, um, fire code is referenced. You know, comply with all our zoning codes, hours of operation is one thing I wanted to confirm, so we decided ten to ten. Right, cause that mirrors. Okay, yeah. Uh, temporary cannabis events, ten to ten, all other cannabis businesses, ten to, everything ten to ten, correct? Okay?
Well, were we gonna mirror the ten to six on Sunday, or can't they do it on Sunday?
They can, uh.
I remember, they couldn't, couldn't.
I don't remember, I thought we did talk.
I think they can do it on.
If they can do it on Sunday, then I think we should also mirror the liquor, which is ten to six.
Ten to six, right?
Ten to six of the street, yeah.
Actually, eleven to six by the state.
Eleven to six by the state.
I don't think we can restrict them, I think the, the latest. Excuse me, we can push them in the morning is ten.
Exactly. Well, that I think.
I don't think cannabis statute exactly. Liquor in that, we can make it as close as possible. I'll put Sunday, Sunday hours, question mark, and look at that. Uh, prohibited activities, no smoking on premises, and then there's a whole bunch of, uh, you can't sell. It references statute three forty-two point two seven, and then we get into the bottom of page eight, which is, uh, the buffer zones, and so. Uh, the only difference from the draft that you saw at the previous meeting. Was the number six, five hundred feet from a church or place of religious assembly. The other. Provisions one through five are basically taking the, the, the fullest. Extent that you were able to do per state statute, so a thousand feet of a school, five hundred residential treatment facility. Five hundred feet of a daycare, five hundred feet of attraction within a public park that is regularly used by minors. Um, that, that number four, that is exactly what the state statute says, they're just pulling state statute right out of there. Uh, five hundred feet from any other cannabis business, and then the five hundred feet from a church or place of religious assembly, so. We're good with that based on kind of previous discussion tonight. Okay?
I know we've kind of beat this to death, but I mean, uh, the, if we're gonna. Emulate the liquor, isn't that, I think the liquor's eight in the morning.
Eight AM till ten PM. Is liquor.
So it's ten to ten, it's, it's eight.
So is the goal to restrict their number of hours period of operation, or the goal to emulate liquor? I have no feeling one way or the other.
I honestly neither.
I don't either. I mean, they sell at ten in the morning or eight in the morning, I don't care. You know. Monday through Saturday.
That, that's the part I don't care about at all. We are, they are allowed to operate until one AM if we allow that, I don't think.
Alright. I'd, I'd say, if we're gonna ma, if we're trying to. Mirror the liquor, let's just make it eight AM, so that mirrors the liquor.
Sounds fair.
Yeah, so eight AM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday, and then whatever.
Ultimately, it's eleven to six, or if we can't, ten to.
As close as we can.
On the Sunday.
Okay. Uh, page nine, uh, B, this was not in the, the first draft, and I like this a lot. It defines where you're measuring from, so buffer distances shall be measured from the lot line of a property on which cannabis business is placed. To the structure identified in one fifty-two point oh six D seven A, which is the provision right about. Non-conforming, so if a cannabis business lawfully established operating location may continue to operate as a lawful non-conforming use. If after OCM in the city licensed them, a school, treatment facility, daycare, or park is established within the required. Buffer distance, a cannabis business that becomes non-conforming is subject to the restrictions in statute. Four sixty-two, three five seven subdivision, one E. Uh, number nine, lower.
For the measurement, do you wanna further? It just says measure from the lot line of the property, do you wanna say, uh, from the closest point to the proposed business? Cause I mean, you can make, you know, I mean, if someone says, well, we measure from the lot line, measure from the back lot line. I get what you're saying, you know, I mean. I think you wanna say from the closest point of the business. Would be the way that I would word that, I guess. Cause you, I mean, that, that's really, that's, and that's what your intent is, is from the, well, it'd be from the. Lot line of, of this, of church or the, or whatever you're measuring from would be the, to the lot line. Close, close, from the lot line to the closest point of the business that you're measuring to. You know, so it's the shortest distance, or the farthest, you know, it's the farthest away, but I mean, you wanna say. You leave it in there, it's ambiguous, so you can say, we can measure from the lot line, well, I can measure from the other, the back corner of the lot line. I'm only four hundred and ten feet from the front of the lot line, but I'm.
So, if you just insert the word closest after the.
Yep.
Buffer distances shall be measured from the closest lot line of the property on which the cannabis business is placed. To the structure, correct, I have, just insert the word.
We don't, we don't wanna reference lot line for the buffered, uh, because some of them aren't, you know. You wanna say structure, I think, for the second part of that. It's actually the. Because you could have a.
Right, but you're measuring from the lot line of the.
Cannabis business.
Cannabis business.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm just sounding like a.
Yeah.
I'm just more so thinking I'm.
Yeah, right. I just don't wanna get caught on a technicality from. Somebody that's gonna try to.
From a, from a cannabis measure.
Right.
Got it.
That's why we're looking at.
That's right. Uh, number nine, lower potency hemp edibles, uh, subject to restrictions and requirements of the subsection. Um, twenty-one, have to be in a lot case, only be sold behind a counter. Um, can't be out on the sidewalk, have to be inside, um. Well, that's, that's not just lower potency, that's everything, so number ten is, that's, everything, number eleven is also applicable to every, every licensure. They have to be connected to public. Water, sewer, stormwater, utility system, come with water. Water, sewer, stormwater, utility system, come with water, uh should be adequate capacity within the water system. So this is a bit redundant because they're in our general provisions. As a structure, you do have to receive. Those, you just can't have a shed, it'll nowhere connected, I mean, i- if there's a, if it's an applicable use within that district. Uh but good to have that in this section as well. Um temporary cannabis events, uh one of the questions was, you know, can we just say no to these? Uh after the last discussion with me, no, we cannot. Uh we hit, so the only district that they're allowed to have a cannabis event, I believe, I said. And then that just gets into. Licensor requirements for temporary cannabis district events as. You can have a temporary cannabis. Uh event, it has to be licensed through OCM, and then it comes to us, consumption is prohibited, which I find. Amusing that you're, that's what cannabis event, you're gonna try to prohibit people from. Consuming on site.
This is what you're seeing for what they're passing.
Yeah, that's in state statute too, yeah, cuz that that gets into the whole. Public use consumption. Uh stuff doing that you can't.
Where you're just.
Taste it like a, taste it like a a gun show, you buy the gun, you're having to shoot with the gun, you know, yeah.
So it's not like a wine tasting, it's like a gun show. Can we back up to the.
So the the definitions, uh do we wanna include? Temporary cannabis event as a definition, because it is in there.
Pretty sure. I think.
Cannabis event organizer.
I think cannabis. Define in state statutes.
Right, but I mean, we wanna put it in the ordinance list. I know you do our diggers in the state statue. You just go to the zoning. Pretty simple to put it in. I think that might be one of the more important definitions to have in there.
Okay, Kate, you had a question about utilities.
Yeah, that sanitary sewer one, there shall be adequate capacity within the sanitary sewer system, including in collection, da-da-da-da, that. What, where is the definition of adequate, who determines that?
So this is mostly, okay, so if somebody in I one district said, we're gonna make gummies here, okay? And we're gonna discharge three hundred fifty thousand gallons of water. Well, no, you're not, cuz their average daily flow max three hundred seventy-one thousand, so that's, that's big.
Gotcha, thank you.
What about parking, a place, can I find parking?
Uh what?
Parking.
You see that in here, or you just asking? So there are parking regulations in a different part of the county, and it goes by square footage of the building.
Okay, perfect.
So it's, yeah, it's like one space per whatever, square.
So many square feet or so much of an occupancy.
And it has to be off street. Unless you're in the central business.
I have a question. So. If we. If we don't have. Someone with a cannabis license in the city, are we going to still have to issue the temporary cannabis event licenses?
If they're licensed through OCM, yeah.
So like if they were in a different part of the county or.
Or I think it'd be anywhere in the state.
There's a whole nother peddler's permit.
Well, not really, because they, they. They are limited in state statute of how many temporary cannabis events they could have. It's like a nonprofit temporary liquor permit, you can't just get constant. Temporary permits.
Right, I just wondered like. If it ended up that we didn't have someone licensed within the city, but we did have someone like in the county.
Fold had one and they wanted to come here and have a temporary event. Yeah, well, yes, we need to do that, but then we need to go through the whole thing and make sure that wherever they're having the event. Meets all the requirements of the zoning code in order to pass the temporary permit.
I think you're overthinking it. I think it's.
No, I I think what, I think her, I know, I'm I'm kinda thinking it too, I think. It's it. Are you gonna have a, instead of a food truck parked somewhere all the time, selling food, can someone? Have this, is that kinda like, someone that could just have some.
Well, they can, but I think it's uh like.
Do we put a moratorium on how many events they can have per year?
State statute does. For per applicant, now that's not to say that somebody from, and it's not just in the county, you're right, anybody can come in from.
People were coming from thirty miles from every direction or whatever, wanting to have temporary here.
Right, so somebody from Cottonwood County could come in and wanna have an event once a month. What's the fee for? Is there a fee for that?
There, that's, so what's being in here? Is not part of the fee schedule, yeah, so we worry about. And I believe for the temporary cannabis event, they leave that open. It's not like the registration renewal where state statute says you go and charge this month for much. But now keep in mind that it it's, I think you're all thinking like a food truck or a peddler's permit, but. They have to go through OCM first to get a temporary cannabis event license, which is way more rigorous than. I don't see. Ten different vendors, if you will, trying to organize constantly, plus we're only allowing it in the industrial area, so. They're pretty limited. Be pretty difficult. I think technically, yes, if ten different people. Applied and got approved for up to a four-day cannabis event, temporary cannabis event license, and they met everything, you could have. You know, four, eight, twelve, sixteen, you know, days of concurrent cannabis event.
But also have private place.
Yeah, four days, I don't see four days. Use in public places, uh can we talk about that, retail registration? So administer regulations for cannabis and low potency hemp edible. Registration is required, um you can't operate a state licensed cannabis or lower potency hemp edible retail business. It's important because there's, these already exist. Um Jeremy has checked this recently, and everybody that is selling Delta nine. Um is registered with the state. Um so that everybody's good there, but uh it is much, much. Much easier to get a lower potency hemp edible retail license than any of the other licensures through OCM. And so, uh. We'll have to stay on that a little bit more than the other type of licensures. And gets into the fees, uh or excuse me, the um. The civil penalty, I know this was a uh question. Uh from Kate the last time, has this, uh is it and or or both or? Uh so in state statutes, it shall, shall incur a civil penalty of up to two thousand. You will not see in here, in this draft, a reference to criminal, because that is later on in the zoning ordinance that. Uh it'll say, it's like. Uh section one fifty-two point oh. One penalty references section or section ten point nine nine, which is any violation of any of this whole code of ordinance. Is considered a misdemeanor punishable by up to about. This is kind of like it. Uh penalty code. Registration is limited, um this is one I wanna talk about, cuz this is one that um I got a lot. Better clarification on um since the last meeting, so the number of registered cannabis retail businesses within the city shall be limited. In accordance with the following provisions, whichever is less. A, the city shall limit the number of cannabis retail businesses to no more than one registration for every twelve thousand five hundred residents. Within the city, and this is the new one, if Murray County has one active cannabis retail business. Registration for every twelve thousand five hundred, the city shall not register additional state licensed cannibal retail businesses. So this, this is uh different than what I stated at the last meeting. What I said was ours counts toward theirs, but not vice versa, and that is incorrect. I found further clarification on the league uh guide, um and theirs does satisfy ours, so.
If there's one in Fuller, we we we.
We don't have to.
Yep, got it.
So is that what we want? I say yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Nodding, Chris, Blake, we're nodding. Uh certification, within thirty days of receiving a copy of the state license app from OCM. The city shall certify in a form provided by the OCM, whether proposed cannabis or lower potency hemp edible retail business complies with the city's building code. Fire code is already ordinance, there's a portal. They have a whole app system, you log in, you say, yeah, you get your, your, your proposed. Application from there, notifies you, uh like I'm the, with the designated official or whatever, so I'll get an email that says, hey. Somebody through OCM applied and, you know, we've. Uh done our due diligence, they they pass all of our stuff, uh now it's up to you, do they pass all of your stuff, basically, so. Um city shall issue retail registration to a cannabis or lower potency hemp edible, that adheres to statute three four two point two two. Set to the following procedures. Fees, uh eh in the fee schedule, required to be paid by an applicant, uh depending on the type of retail cannabis, so. Whether I, or excuse me, number one, an initial retail registration fee shall not exceed five hundred dollars or one half of the amount of an initial state license fee. A renewal, retail registration fee shall not exceed one thousand dollars. Uh number three is what was sorely lacking from the model ordinance, and it gets. What combination of those fees do they pay initially, the initial registration fee shall include the initial registration fee and the first annual renewal fee. A renewal red- retail registration fee shall be charged at the time of the second renewal and the subsequent renewal thereafter. Uh medical combo, operating in adult use, retail locations will only be charged a single registration fee, yes, Kate.
How often are they required to register? It doesn't say annual anywhere, I don't believe.
Uh three says annual. The first annual renewal fee.
Okay, I mean, it, you know. So a registration fee is required or renewal e- every year.
Yeah, renewal is defined as a year. Cuz they have to renew through OCM as well.
And I still don't understand why the initial registration fee is five hundred and the renewal is.
State legislature. Completely agree with you.
Talked about that before, or you mean, yeah, whatever.
Uh applicant, applicant for, so. What am I number, okay, that that should be, these should be. One through five. Application applicant for cannabis or lower potency hemp edible. Chelsea that an application form is from out of the city. Uh just gets it all to know graphic information, but you need. Give a clarifying question.
Yeah, yeah, just go back to page eleven. On B for the one act we agreed to live in. Are we sure we wanna do that? So the county has one, we can't have one?
That is what that said, um.
That's what we're saying. If we agree to this.
Uh yeah, cuz it's shallow, not made.
Well, I wanna go with the elevator. You know, limit liquor stores. I was, was, I mean. I'm saying if you, if uh if you got a liquor store in Fuller, you can't have one in.
That is what that's saying.
Oh, you're creating conflict. I don't think that that's really. Our. Our call. Our call.
Well, the the question for the council is. Do you want capitalism to reign supreme, or do you wanna limit THC in your town? That's really what it comes down to. And that's a question for the, I honestly have no. I'm not leaning one way or the other.
The state made it legal.
Yes, they did.
I guess it isn't, as far as I'm concerned, it is my. I'm not the judge and jury on that, so I guess I would say may. Yeah, I would say may.
If Murray County has one active cannabis retail business registration for every twelve thousand five hundred residents, the city may not register additional state license.
May allow.
May or may not.
Right.
May or may not, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I like that, I like, I. If you meet all the qualifications, you really can't. You know, well, if there's not another one in the county, we can't, we have no option, we have to let them in. If there happens to be another one in the county, then it gives us the option of whether we do allow. Or not, or not, and. Not if they meet all the qualifications, if they me, if they pass in all the. They pass everything to get the, the, to get the license. And if they find a piece of land that meets our ordinance and stuff like that, can we deny that for?
And I think if the way we had it, the way we had it.
Another one in Murray County.
Well, it's the same.
That's what you're changing it to, yeah.
That's what I mean, but I mean, no, I'm, I'm changing it, then if there's already one in Murray County somewhere else, whether it be Curry or Fuller or whatever, then if someone else wanted to come and put one in Slaton. And they could, they passed all the things and they found a piece of land that it would work on, stuff like that. We should, we should approve it because it's capitalism.
Well, then you're, then, then you're saying, then you wanna delete the word not. Then, then you're, if that's your intent. I don't like that, because then, then you're saying. You absolutely will, shall has a very different meaning than may, so it. See what I'm saying?
Right, but I mean, again, I guess we're, how do we become the jury on who gets and who doesn't? If they pass all the, pass all the background, they pass all the stuff from the state.
We get to become the jury. It's exactly Blake's point, we only begin to come the, the jury if there is another one licensed. Then we do get to decide, if there's not, and they pass all the requirements, then yeah, we're, we have to say yes.
I get, I guess, here's my train of thought. At this particular point in time, because. Now, years down the road, we might view this very differently, uh as we're talking about this. You know, a hundred years ago, they viewed alcohol very differently, and it wasn't that long ago, it was completely. Taboo at the fairgrounds, and then all of a sudden, I mean, and things change over time. We don't know what this is gonna. Uh what the implications of this are. I, I feel like. That we should keep it the most restrictive that the state allows. We can always change that, it's, it's easy, it's easy to be more lenient down the road, so. It, like, for instance. If, if one happens down in Fuller or a different town, and. That opens up and, and you see, oh, this is really, really a bad thing, or something's not, you know, the, the end result is not good. Well, we're already set up where, okay, well, we're fine, we don't have to allow it, cuz it's already there. Um if we put something in here, I'm totally fine with the notion of putting something in, the city. May or may not, or has the option, has an option of allowing another one, cuz that leaves it a little more open-ended to us. But I mean, if you wanna talk true capitalism, why are we restricting it to, to one within the city of Slate? Then we could allow as many as we want, I, I think honestly, the, the true intent of this whole. Allowance of numbers right now is kind of a test the waters and see what happens, and. I personally would like to, if. I don't wanna say we absolutely have to have one, if, if someone else had one, we can see.
I agree with that.
Maybe down the road, it, it would turn into something that is drawing people in and.
The, the originally drafted version did not give us a choice.
Right.
The one that you're saying doesn't give us any choice either, it's just the opposite of how it was.
Right, but I'm, I would say if we're gonna do something, I would, I would. Do what Blake originally said and put something in mayor's. Yeah, that way at least we can, they can apply and we can evaluate it and we, at least then we, then we have the state.
Especially if you get.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Some really, really bad business practicing person that comes in, I mean, it gives us the option. Kinda like, well, you have a bad reputation, yeah, you've got all your stuff. Legally, you can do it, but we're not gonna like it, cause you're not nice.
So what I have written down here is.
No, I'm afraid that that's subjective on deciding that, oh, you've a bad reputation, so we're not gonna allow that, just cause what we've heard or whatever.
That's what Albert Lee did. That's exactly what Albert Lee did, they're getting sued. Submitted three approved applications to the city of Albert Lee. And the first one, they rejected three to two.
Because they didn't like that guy.
Because they didn't like that guy. And the second two, they said, sounds good. And the first guy's going, hmm, no.
I smell rotten fish here.
Right.
Now, I mean, that, I mean, that's, I guarantee you it's gonna end up in front of the Minnesota Supreme Court, I mean, because it's, it is. It's literally right off the bat, challenging the whole intent of the ordinance.
Right.
Of what cities have the power to do or not do.
Right.
And Albert Lee.
You call him, and I don't, I don't, I don't think that's our decision to do that. But I think if there's one, if there's one in, in, and there's another one in Murray County outside city limits.
That's the big difference, because in Albert Lee, in Freeborn County, there was not, the city of Albert Lee was the very first. Batch in the whole state.
Right.
To get these three approved OCM. Uh deals.
Yeah.
And, and Freeborn County had, out, out of Albert Lee city limits, hadn't gotten any approved ones yet, and so. The city of Albert Lee put themselves way out on the branch and said, well, we, we know we're kinda supposed to do that, we're saying no anyway.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
This would be kind of a. Oh, I, I don't know.
I, I don't know.
I guess, I guess, I guess, I like the, the, the may or may not, just for the fact.
It absolutely is subjective.
That it, that it, that it brings us to, or it brings, allows us to go through the review process. If someone applies, you know, more than likely, it's just like a liquor license. That, you know, if they follow, if they dot all their i's and cross all their t's and have everything in line. Um and they find a piece of property that fits our, fits within zoning code of what they wanna do. Are you going, probably not going to deny it? That, that in the first come, first served basis. You know, so there may be two in Murray County. But then after that, we're done any. You know, but at least it allows that they have to come. Or if there's one in Curry or one in Fuller in Murray County, at least that way they, they have to apply to the city. And go through the review, review process through us, so that we can make sure that. That they are dotting their i's and crossing their t's and we're not just saying we're relying on the state to do their due diligence.
Well, and that's my question is, you know, how much subjectivity is allowed by the cities? If they go through OCM and they get the licensure and get the staff of approval from OCM and it comes to us for, you know, consideration. How, how, you know, how do you just go, other than we can, we're gonna have one, we're gonna have two, that's our limit. And if we're over that, then it's easy. If we're, but, but the may thing, that gives it all a bunch of wishy washy again, and we're gonna be an Albert Lee's call.
I hate, well, kind of. I could tell you that in other statutory references, like zoning. When it comes to variances or condition use permits and alcohol for that matter, because I've asked this question. Uh you do have a lot of leeway there, i- if your code and state statute does not. Speak explicitly to what the city shall do, or what the city shall consider. There's a whole bunch of may in there. You may consider this aspect of it, you may consider that aspect of it. So if, uh. If you buy a lot in town and you wanna put a standalone shed in there. And you don't own any adjacent property, so it's an accessory use on a primary lot or whatever, that's not allowed, right? So you need a conditional, just a conditional use permit. Well, you have three other properties strewn around town, and they're giant piles of trash. Okay? And you come in and you want the same piece of property. You have three other pieces of property around town and they're just a little gleam, excellent pieces of property on God's green earth. We, the zoning board and the council have to, have to pick one or the other, have that. That's the whole point of like a variance, so, so that's, that's the waters that you're getting into. And yes, will people squeal, uh it's subjective? Yes, they will. Are they right? Yes. Do we have the legislative power to, to do that? Anyway, at least in other. You know, this untested in the cannabis.
I guess the way I, the way I see this coming down is that if. Another community or another location in Murray County gets one and someone brings it to our, brings an application to the city. I think if we follow through the review process and, and everything, chances are it's gonna be. A business that we can do background on, and it's gonna be. It maybe be, we know, but it may be a business that we can at least do some research on, and I, I think as long as they're. Following all of the checks and balances that they have to do to apply to the state, chances are we'll probably jump to it.
So I agree with the last part of what you said. I would not agree with the first part of what you said, because this is like solar. Everybody's just getting into it.
Right.
Hot and heavy.
So.
And they, and they just became incorporated, and they may be coming from east coast, west coast, where it's already been legal. And so now Minnesota's the new hot potato, and we're gonna come here, and they are local people. Or they may be local people that own the building, but it's a third party which is allowed. You can lease out the operations of it, but. To speak to your last part, yes, they have to go through all kinds of vetting through OCM. Insurances, background, and to get that licensure before they even get to us, so.
Yep. I think, by personal opinion, for, and remember, it's, it's one. You know, it'd be one more. And then the county, so I mean, it's two, so it's not like it's eight. You know, it's, it's, it's not like liquor in that aspect that you could have four liquor stores in town. You know, it's one facts. You know, even if there's one in Curry, or if there's one in Fuller, or if there's one in Oka, or wherever it's gonna be.
And I think.
It would, it would be one.
It would be one, but the issue is, you've got three people that come and.
Well, right, then it's, if the fir-, the first guy that comes in and has all this poop in a group, that's the guy. Cause then you gotta basically, then it, then it becomes a chronological thing, you know, I mean, you know, first come, first served.
I, I get that. The only thing, as to Josh's point, I, I do, I do view this. Now that you say that, it's very similar to the solar. We feel about the way some of those instances have gone now. I think for right now. The state is requiring one per thousand five hundred people, which is only one in the county. If something happens in a different town, that would be an opportunity for us to see what it's like. I think we should leave it as it's written. And not allow it right now. We can always change it, it's really, really hard to change it the other way. But we could change it in the future, right?
You can change it in the future, the problem is gonna be, once you get the ping of the email from your portal. You're supposed to have an answer to OCM within thirty days, and you can't change the ordinance in thirty days.
That's fine.
So if you have it one way. And then an application comes in, like the way that it's currently written. Tough, you, we already have one in Curry.
Right.
There is an application at Fuller, by the way. I don't know who it is, but the county called and said. There, I don't think she's gotten notification from OCM yet, but they've been contacted. County zoning, cause kind of the, Fuller deferred to the county.
Do they have theirs in place? There's all their. Kansas in place, they already have it already. I mean, four. Are they just referring to the?
Gotcha, so there's fall under Murray County's.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Which as an aside, I did print and read, read theirs, and theirs is pretty much identical to what. You know, in terms of buffers, they're only limited to one. That's why the county called, was, you know, do you have any applications yet? And I said, no, we don't. And she said, well, I have the processes. But anyway, we have. Talked about this one a lot. I feel like we're kinda, um, come full circle here. And we were gonna amend it, and now we're back to. Shall not.
I, I don't.
Your shall not.
I, I, I like the shall not, is because we don't know what we're getting into. And if we have the opportunity to see what someone else is getting into.
I mean, there's a facility in Coleman, South Dakota, just because I'm standing out on the highway there. Doing the highways or town or whatever, but I mean, they have a facility there behind the Dollar General there that they. Bought a piece of land and they built a, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar building and they employ people there. And it's a retail, or I mean, it's a. Wholesaler.
Is it private or is it trial?
No, it's private. You don't know, there's no sign there, there's no nothing, you mean, you know, and then.
Manufacturing?
Well, yeah.
It's just, it's just wholesale, like it's, there's a.
It's processing and manufacturing.
Okay, but no, Joe, well.
No.
No.
It's not, it's not a retail thing. But there's, it's just a metal building out there that, you know, has parking lot, but I mean, it's, there's no sign there, there's no nothing, but I mean, that's what it is. It's right behind, it's right behind the Dollar General or industrial park. But employees, you know, there's eight people that work there.
And so that, that's a little different, cause this, this provision is specifically. So if somebody came in and got a wholesaler license, and then somebody came in and got a retail license, like we can't say no. Because the one every twelve thousand is for, twelve thousand five hundred is for retail.
Not limited on, limited on the others then. I'm on the fence on it, I, I'm leaning towards the shall not, and just because I feel like, you know, I hate to be. The whole subjectivity of it and what's happening, I, I mean, it's new and it's, it's untested and, you know, we don't know. And you kind of have to watch and see a little bit.
Chris? May or may not, shall or shall not?
I'd say may or may not.
Dean?
Shall consider.
So may or may not? Well, you're tied. You've got two may or may nots and two shall nots. Well, we're not passing it tonight, right, so.
She came and gave my input too, I always like to have a full council on it, on something.
So, yeah, this is really. The only main sticking point that we've kinda really came across.
But it's a big one.
It is a big one, and if, so if we hammer through the rest of this, and. Us, our, our. If we're, us are really good agreements with everything else here, we don't, it shouldn't take long to finalize this to next meeting, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Sounds good.
I think we kind of already went through page twelve, so we never went back to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thirteen was a spacing issue. Uh page fourteen, um this gets, you know, certification under legal property taxes, assessments, interest, utility fees. Um application has to be complete. Uh one thing I did notice here. Uh, uh, letter C, if an application is determined to be complete. Uh that should be clerk administrator and not zoning administrator, cause the, the reference should be.
Yeah.
My position for everything there. Number six gets into that, uh that I'm the, what they call the designated official, um that's, uh state statute. Should review the application, it shall determine in consultation with our city staff as may be appropriate, if the request for registration complied with all the. Section. For registration.
So this is all decided by you and not the council then?
Um, no, it would have to go to council, just like any liquor license or just go or. This, this, these specific parts in six are like, I'm making the. Uh the determination if it's a complete application. Like, just like we just did, right, I mean, do you have, have you done everything? You need to do to even make it to the council table.
So. Like certifi-, uh no delinquent property tax, a special assessment, blah, 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 that's just for the application. What happened down the road, if that gets in the rears, is that grounds to suspend or?
So that I believe is on. Transfer inspections and compliance checks at least once a year, minimum of one on ounce age verification, one compliance check.
Suspension.
Yeah, so then it gets a suspension, so. City may suspend a cannabis or lower potency hemp edible, if it violates this ordinance or poses an immediate threat to the health or safety of the public. The city shall immediately notify the business and write in the grounds for the suspension, so. That's a pretty broad blanket statement, so there's, there's obviously a lot of provisions. And that, that eleven A is saying violates this.
Anything.
Anything. So. We notify OCM then in writing of the grounds. Will provide the, the OCM will provide the city of the cannabis or lower potency hemp edible responsive to complain. Seven calendar days and perform any necessary inspection within thirty.
So, does that mean that, you know, we, we notified then that there's something going in?
Then OCM takes off. And see, then you see, uh, letter D, the city may. Instate, reinstate a registration if it determines that the violations have been resolved, the city shall, shall reinstate a registration if OCM determines that the violations have been resolved. And that gets into the civil penalties again, and of course your severability statement, your effective. And that's crucial.
Come back to page fourteen.
Yes.
From section six E, that sentence is a little weirdly worded, I think it needs to be.
Appeal of an application for a cannabis or lower potency hemp edible retail business registration being denied may be appealed in accordance with.
So you're saying appeal, no, appeal of an application and then maybe appealed, that doesn't, so. Um, maybe to say, if an application for a cannabis or low potency hemp or retail business.
I, I think.
Is being denied, an appeal may be, you know, brought with according to the city, you see what it, it just doesn't make sense.
It's, I think if you made it say appeal of a denied application. Does that make sense?
But then it says, being denied again, so no, then it, no, that's. You could, but you could say appeal of the denied app, well, no.
Oh, no, I get it, yeah, I get it the way it's writ, or the way it's written, appeal of an application that's being denied can be done in this fashion.
Right, it's just, it's just worded very strictly.
Yeah, being denied should be after application. Yes, no, I think it's.
No, I think what it needs to say is.
I, I understand what it's saying, I, it's too many words.
Yeah, and appeal of an application being denied.
A denied application may be appealed to.
Yes.
For, maybe appealed in accordance with.
Yes, that's exactly what. Yes, that's exactly what. He just was a tongue twister.
Or, if you put. Appeal of an application, if you put parentheses. For cannabis or lower potency of retail registration. Appeal of an application being denied may be appealed. If you put parentheses around that part, then it's, it's specifying what it is.
Still the same, just. Okay, so chop off, appeal of an application, and then put a denied application, so it's gonna read like this. A denied application for cannabis or lower potency hemp edible retail business registration. May be appealed in accordance with the city zoning law, so.
Yes.
Perfect.
Cuz you're also really, really being denied until there.
Yes.
Yeah, that, and I understand the intent of that, uh, there was one, two, three, seven, too many words.
Yeah.
Okay?
Fix that.
Um. Okay, so just the, the one. Number of. Businesses, correct?
Yep. Is there any kind of business?
Do you? We can call for the public hearing. We do not have to have a. Version that is locked in stone and is unable to be amended on the fly. You can call for, like, that's the whole purpose of the public hearing, right? To even show up and say, well.
You need.
I listened to your YouTube discussion and I feel this way, and then you can, you know, so. Uh, do I have your blessing to host for that? Public hearing and then we, cuz if this is the only deal to your point.
I think, I think so, because.
Maybe so.
That's probably the only thing, right? Someone will have input on that one. Cool, okay. Is there any other business?
Nope.
My life, uh, so that. Do I have a more, sure, so. Oh, did I? Officially, we do all, all of the.
No.
Okay. Let the record show that everybody was here on the decline then. Okay, now is there one? So, second, second. I'm gonna say hi, I'm trying, I turn seven. Thirty. Four. Ish.
Chris, when did you get here?
Yeah.
Five AM.
That was right up, yeah, five.
Six oh.